We got no more. Oh, I forgot my book.
It's eleven oh three AM, February fourteenth. I'd now like to call this commissioners' meeting to order. If you would, please stand for a short prayer. We'll do a short prayer after the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly father, we come here today in service to you and to the citizens of Henry County. Please guide us in our decisions. Please help us to be a good guiding light for the county of Henry. And in your name we pray, amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? If so, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the minutes of the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion accept claims is presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Make a motion accept payrolls presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to accept the payroll. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, out of the, off the agenda, we need to bring in Tim Welsh. For he's with the emergency management. Give us an update on the eclipse meeting. Thank you, Tim.
Hit the button.
I appreciate you letting me go out of order. Working on the fire department today.
There's a small fee for that.
I assumed, so just put it on my tab. A couple of things I need to talk about this morning. And solar eclipse related and training related. So I'll start with the training. We discussed it several different times in this building on May thirteenth. I just wanted to confirm that that day will be okay. The commissioners already approved the building being used. But we came together on a date of May thirteenth, and I believe that's after tax time. So that should limit the amount of people here. And we'd be here that day. Most of the day, but the start time's not been determined. So May thirteenth, I want to make sure if that was a day that was okay.
So that's on a Monday, which means the auditor's office is the only one that would be open. I guess we could close it. If we close the building, Joel, we are required to, we don't have, are we required to make them use vacation time? Or just we pay, we go ahead, they get paid as normal if we close it?
Yeah.
Oh, he wants you there.
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, then you're gonna be here, I guess. Okay, I apologize.
And all the details will be forthcoming, but I just want to make sure that day was appropriate. Especially, like I said, I think tax is, will be the week before. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, and that there wasn't any other special events that that day would interfere with.
I will make the motion to have May thirteenth as the training for this building.
Okay, perfect. Now I'll get with all the, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion's been made to second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. Secondly, solar eclipse information. I'll start with the EMA office. It's over here on Twelfth Street. The city has already approved to close the street, Twelfth Street, from Race to Central. It's that little alley just south of the office to facilitate the EMA office being used as an emergency operations center that weekend. And they're gonna block it on both sides from Friday evening until Tuesday morning. And my ask from the commissioners is that we close that parking lot except for emergency service personnel, because that will be the meeting at each timeframe. So there'll be a lot of police cars and EMS people in that parking lot. And that would be from Friday after hours, five o'clock, until Tuesday morning at seven o'clock. So basically it'd be off limits to, to the county and so forth that Monday, regular workday. So that'd be from Friday, five PM, April, hold that be, eight, seven, six, five. Friday the fifth of April to Tuesday the ninth of April at seven AM.
I'll make the motion to close the parking lot.
Motion's been made to close the parking lot. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to close the parking lot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The next short discussion is about April the eighth. That is actually the solar eclipse. I've brought it up a couple of different times, but I'd like for the, to make known to the commissioners, if you would consider making up some sort of arrangement that day for any sort of county employees. I don't want to put essential or non-essential terms on anybody, but if there's afternoon for congestion purposes and for safety purposes, for any county employees that might be out and about, either we figure out a way to minimize their exposure after lunchtime or have them off. And that's for, like I said, congestion purposes in the county for travel, as well as any injuries that could occur due to unnecessary exposure.
Well, Tim, of course, I have a question. I know this has been brought up to us before.
Sure.
And it's, I'm guessing from what you're being told, that other than our non-essential employees, that it would probably be beneficial for us to maybe close county government for that day? Is that your recommendation?
Or at least half day. And it's, like I said, it's the eye injury, as well as the road congestion would be the concern. Or the entire day would might be beneficial to folks just to stay out of the high traffic.
So here, here in this building, the only office again is open is the auditor's office. I have spoken with all three of the judges. One does not have anything on his calendar and won't put any. The other two have a few things on their calendar and is willing to move those to close. Because that was, you know, it's easy to close this building. It's more difficult to close that building. But they are okay with us closing as well. Brayden, I don't know what your, you were gonna do for the highway. Were you going, are you okay with closing the highway?
Yeah, I mean, just for the sake of, I think it's a good idea or things that you, but a minimum of half of it, but not the others at all.
Okay.
In other counties, this just came to light in the last couple of months. I've spoken to several other counties that have closed for that purpose. That's my recommendation.
I will make the motion to close county offices on April the eighth for the solar eclipse.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the county offices on April the eighth. In regards to the solar eclipse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. Last bit of conversation. I say the best for last. After speaking last week, legal counsel Joel informed me the conversations that were passed through the county council to use food and beverage for tourism tax for our eclipse funding for our safety personnel or emergency services is going to be somewhat of a conflict to take it from that fund. What I'm approaching the commissioners for today is to have that same amount approved that could be moved, I know it would be an amendment to an ordinance for the ARP funds, but to the same amount, which is fifty thousand dollars max for that weekend to be used for emergency services for extra coverage throughout the county. Again, that would be the max. And so that, I had spoken to the county council somewhat, and I'll be here tonight for that as well. But that's what I'm asking for, is that we could move that forward. I know we're kind of at the last minute, and that's my fault. I should have researched a little bit deeper, but our, our emergency services are prepared. And I've had contact in several meetings. Sheriff's Department, Police Department, EMS, everybody's been on board. I'm just ready to pull the trigger with it, but I had to stop in my tracks for just a minute until we have this conversation.
So, Joe, I know that you typically the process, somebody comes and asks for ARP money. We approve or based upon it being approved, then you update the ordinance. It comes back, we approve the ordinance, and then it goes to the council. Is there a way to expedite this so that he can move forward?
I mean, I think you could authorize executing an amendment to the resolution with that expenditure. And I think councils can do the same, but I think councils will prove something potential on you guys.
Okay. And then when the ordinance is amended?
The resolution's amended, the data can execute it.
Execute it, okay. Okay, so I will make the motion to approve the ARP funding, making an amendment to the resolution to approve the ARP funding for up to fifty thousand dollars in overtime and costs.
The food and beverage money that you, that was already approved, right?
Correct.
So now what's it going to be used for if it can't be used for what it was stated for?
Nothing.
Nothing's my understanding.
It goes back, yeah. It hasn't been appropriated yet.
Well, we all know how I feel about spending the ARP money, but this is for public safety, which I think should be foremost. I will second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, thank you. So that's all I needed. Apparently there's somebody stuck in your elevator. I gotta go help, so. Thank you.
Thank you. They're out.
Well, thank you whoever got them out of the elevator. Who was stuck? Was it you, Steve?
Steven Joe.
Steven Joe?
I was gonna say, if you guys really want a time off.
Oh, Lord.
If we're safe to move on now, we have the clerk's monthly report. We have a copy of the clerk's monthly report. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded to approve the clerk's monthly report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a copy of the treasurer's monthly report. Do I have a motion?
Motion approves presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded for the treasurer's monthly report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a Spiceland Township statistical report, period ending December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Looks like Corey Murphy, EDC update.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Same to you.
I placed a folder at your station. On the left-hand side of the folder is our twenty twenty-four newsletter. It provides an overview of essentially the last year and then a look ahead. So I'll, I'll leave that for your, for your reading pleasure or to line the litter box of your, for your, for your cat tonight. However, you want to, to move forward, or if you need help sleeping. But, so twenty twenty-three was an incredibly successful year for the county. You know, on October twelfth, we had a six million dollar day. So that was the day that the Hall of Fame announced their, you know, did their groundbreaking. And then on the same day, the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs awarded Newcastle Main Street a two million dollar grant for historic preservation in downtown. And then the investments and expansions across the county, really in every corner of the county. You know, the Moreland, the Wilberite Trail in Moreland. The library expansion project in Knightstown. Henry Community Health Breaking Ground in Knightstown. Draper in Spiceland. Co-Alliance in Melville. And the Mount Summit Facility, and so on and so forth. If you turn the page, there's a list of our board members. We are a public-private not-for-profit, receiving investment from county government, city government, and then business investment. And our, our board is reflective of a large cross-section of the community. Lower left-hand side, recovery funds impact more than two hundred jobs. So in, in partnership with county government, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs had additional COVID grants for small businesses. So we worked with the auditor's office, having the blessing of both the commissioners and the council, and we dispersed two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of funding to thirty-nine local small businesses, representing two hundred and twenty-six employees. I'll leave the rest of the newsletter for your review, but thank you for your, your ongoing support. The other item on the left-hand side of your folder is a new program. It's marked draft, because we're still finalizing some of the details. But in twenty twenty-two, Henry County celebrated its two-hundredth birthday. And volunteer committee, primarily led by the, the artist known as Frost and Barrett. So that's Scott Frost and Carrie Barrett and many other volunteers, did fundraising to help the county celebrate its two-hundredth birthday. But all along, they wanted to leave proceeds to impact education in a positive manner going forward. Initially, it was going to be the college savings program, the five-two-nine program, for a variety of reasons that just didn't work out. However, a group of us have, have got together in collaboration with the Community Foundation and the Bicentennial Committee. And we're creating the Henry County Education Fund, a legacy project of Henry County, Indiana's bicentennial celebration. It is scholarships for post-secondary education, and specifically certificates offered through IB Tech, with a preference for certificates available at our Newcastle IB Tech, although really certificate from IB Tech. Initially, we will fund two to four last-dollar scholarships. This year, with a long-term goal to fund one hundred-plus scholarships by twenty thirty-two, Henry County's two-hundred-and-tenth birthday. This is loosely based upon a national program called Kalamazoo Promise in Kalamazoo, Michigan. And then more close to us, Shelby County, Indiana, has a program called Shelby County Advantage. Specifically, the Shelby County Advantage will fund last-dollar scholarships for an associate's degree for any graduating high school individual that meets certain requirements at all the Shelby County high schools. The funding for that just is not attainable for us right now, but we still wanted to start small and then grow. And so that's why it's two to four scholarships this year, growing to a hundred-plus scholarships by the county's two-hundred-and-tenth birthday. Who can apply? Any Henry County high school senior with a minimum two-point-oh GPA. Any resident of Henry County with a high school degree or equivalent. And any adult employed here in Henry County with a high school degree or equivalent. Scholarship resources are limited. Apply early. That application will eventually be available on the Community Foundation's website. I've mentioned last-dollar scholarship a couple of times. Let me define it. It is the difference between gift aid through FAFSA, so not student loans. We're not counting student loans. The individual can take the student loan, but we're not, so it's the difference between the cost of the program and grants. This fund will pay the difference. If, on the adult perspective, if FAFSA's not available for whatever reason, maybe there's an employer tuition contribution or a scholarship through the employer. We'll look to cover the gap. We've listed the certificates. And then at the bottom of that list, it says, looking for a different program? We're open to including that program. What is a certificate? A certificate is an industry-focused. It's designed for workforce preparation. It's earned in as little as six months. The coursework, and here's, here's what's really important. The coursework also applies towards an associate's degree and can be transferred if the individual wants to continue on. From a sustainability perspective, this is, so the proceeds from the Henry County Two Hundred are being invested with the Community Foundation to create an endowment for future scholarships. Endowed funds are permanent, and scholarships are paid only from the earnings, not the original gift amount. Think of this as the Flex Fund that the Community Foundation has now. It's the most flexible source of funding that the Community Foundation has to do grants. Think of this as the Flex Fund for Education. So the fund gets invested, and then there's a length of time before the earnings are made available. The County Redevelopment Commission has the ability to support workforce training. We amended our plan several years ago to be able to do that. One way we've done that since twenty eighteen is we funded equipment purchases for the Career Center. We started that in twenty eighteen, and then through the current pledge, we will have provided two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the Career Center for equipment purchases. We also have some funds obligated to provide assistance for going back to school. And so the County Redevelopment Commission has agreed to provide ten thousand dollars a year to make this available now, as opposed to waiting until the earnings are available. We're all, so when people go to want to donate at the foundation, this fund will be an option. If, if businesses want to partner, we hope to engage in a discussion that not only they do the tuition scholarship, but maybe they make a contribution to the endowment to grow this. So by twenty thirty-two, we have enough resources to do a hundred-plus scholarships for Henry County residents. So I wanted to, to inform you of that. I also wanted to stress that it's draft. We're still working on some final details, but we'll make an announcement when the applications are available. We hope to be able to have people enroll this fall and, and, and start the program. I too want to talk about the eclipse. So on the right-hand side are two documents. Both of these documents are available at hoopsinhenry.com. So our team has put together a guide for businesses and destinations. It's there. The back of the first page is an event information form. So the hoopsinhenry.com forward slash eclipse is a landing page that is collecting event information. We can't promote your event if you don't tell us about it. So this, this is the written version of a Google form. That same Google form is available on our website. And there are several events going on in our county. You all voted to close the county today. We are, so the eclipse planning list on the very back page, the first statement is to determine if your business will be open. We're not offering whether you should be open or closed, but we want business owners to think about the impact on their business from a traffic standpoint and also from an employee safety standpoint.
Well, it's, it's not the people coming in Monday through Friday. It's the people all leaving at three-thirty on Monday.
Yep.
Is, is gonna be the logjam?
Why is it such a big deal? So I'm referring to the next document that we just came out. It's a two-pager. It is a, it is a document with the audience of participants. So, you know, people that are gonna enjoy the eclipse, whether they're residents or visitors. Why is it such a big deal? It will be the only total solar eclipse visible from Henry County in the next three hundred and seventy-five years. That's why it's a big deal. And we look to the experiences of the communities that, that were in the path of totality in the twenty seventeen, and the amount of people that participated in that was tremendous. However, this is a longer path, and it goes through more populated. The, the eclipse coming up is just going to be much larger in impact on population centers in, in twenty twenty-four. So we want people to enjoy it. We want them to enjoy it safely. And ultimately, we want a few of those visitors to come back and enjoy our county in the future. So there's all kinds of resources on our website. I appreciate the collaboration of the Emergency Management Office, the Health Department, the police agencies, so on and so forth. Questions? Maybe I didn't cover something? I know I've been I know I've been up here long enough, for today at least.
I'm excited about the IB Tech program. And what excites me is you only have to have a minimum of a 2.0 or not. Look, everybody, I was above a 2.0, but that doesn't mean I got a whole lot of scholarships. But we're opening the range to a lot of people, and that's exciting.
Yeah, I really appreciate the vision.
I appreciate those who get 4.0, and I didn't get a 4.0 either, but I appreciate those that get 4.0s, but I also appreciate those that get 2.0s and helping at least they're eligible.
I appreciate the vision of the Bicentennial Planning Committee.
Absolutely.
Wanted to impact this county for really generations to come. And this program's going to start small, but we're going to grow it.
Thank you, Corey, for all your information, for all your hard work on those programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have someone from the chamber?
Yes.
None of us wore red today. None of us wore red today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Cindy Brooks. Happy Valentine's Day. I'm a member of Services with the Chamber of Commerce.
I was just telling Commissioner Wiley that none of us up here wore red today, so.
Come on.
Oh, no.
Come to the Chamber office, we probably have something you can have. I'm here today just to kind of go over some things we have coming up and that we've had done in the past month or so. We celebrated our first-year anniversary for our Network for Women on last Friday. We had 37 women in attendance. We were at Glen Oaks Health Campus. We had, our speakers were Jennifer Fox and Amber Estle from the Henry County Community Foundation, and we absolutely learned a lot from that conversation. So we're excited that this program is still growing and able to reach out and network women to women and kind of growing that right there, so we're excited about that. We have the mayor's lunch tomorrow. As of right now, we have 150 in attendance, so that's a big lunch for us, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the mayor has to say. Our next big event will be March 20th. If you're not familiar with the Chamber Awards Gala, that is coming up. I have brochures, if anybody would be interested in that, I'll leave a few up here. This night is full of all kinds of great things. We have nine categories that we do. It used to be just Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year, and we've expanded that to include Citizen, Young Professional, Entrepreneur of the Year, Frontline Hero, Small Business, Large Business, Company Culture Excellence, and Community Nonprofit Awards. The top three that are nominated in all those categories are brought to our event, and then it is voted on through our membership and through board members, so it is voted on that way. The Chamber doesn't have a vote in that, so just if everybody knows that. But we are still looking for nominations for those categories, and you can do that at our website, and that ends on the 23rd. We are also looking for some sponsorships, so if you know anyone or a business, if you're a business owner here, this is a great community event for Henry County, 400 in attendance last year. We're looking forward to that, again, being a sellout for this. It is a great way to give back to the community and for us to recognize those who do great things within Henry County. So we are still looking for nominations for that, if anybody is interested. We also will have a speed networking. This is a new program for the Chamber, two months, September, March and September, we will have speed networking at REMC. This one is going to be on March 13th, and you can register on our website. So Sean has come up with some great things to be able to help businesses connect with other businesses and get more referrals for those. So that's kind of what we're looking forward to doing and supporting our local businesses. So, if you have any questions? I spoke fast enough.
No, I don't have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, I'll leave it to you for anybody. Thank you very much.
Next, we're looking forward to an update from Josh, Josh Estle.
Okay, I'm going to keep this high-level and pretty brief, but property and casualty update. Joel was able to file info with the Department of Insurance on what transpired with travelers. They have 20 days legally to respond. It was filed on the 8th, so, you know, we should hear back from them by the end of the month. I mean, I had zero expectations that this meeting on the calendar, we were going to have anything done, given the timeframe. But we've made a ton of progress. I think I can fairly confidently say that we're going to have insurance on March 1st. It just may be really ugly. So I don't know if you have other questions, you want to get into more details, I'll obviously keep you guys posted and have the next meeting on the calendar to hopefully have everything ironed out.
I guess the question I have is, your estimation how ugly is ugly?
I mean, I think we're going to have kind of two different program structures. We're going to have, hopefully, what's going to end up being a piecemealed with multiple carriers, similar to what we have now. If we go that route, I think there's, the law deductible is going to be at least 150. I mean, that's what it's going to be. And that law premium is going to be probably more. I don't know by how much. I'm waiting on, I've got the initial $2 million, waiting on the excess $3. The initial $2 is around what we're paying now with the 150 for the law. The excess $3 won't be super expensive, but obviously, if you go back six years, we would be self-insuring every law claim we've ever had with a 150 deductible. So the other program is going to be more of an all-lines aggregate, almost like a partially self-funded, kind of like we do on the health insurance, where all the lines would have one annual deductible that we would take, and we would buy insurance above that, and then we would fund, you know, the initial amounts. I've got to review that proposal. I had a call at 10 o'clock this morning, so I didn't know this until about an hour ago. That proposal, as it stands now, is 150,000 all-lines deductible for excluding law for liability, and then 300 law for the year. And we'd have to buy property insurance still on top of that. So I will have that, I think, in the next week or so, kind of ironed out, and we'll keep everyone posted on kind of where we are. But, you know, the deductible is going to be what I think is going to be the driving, quote-unquote, ugly part of it.
So when you get this ironed out, so obviously, March 1st is when we need to have everything approved and signed, and our next meeting is the 28th. Does that give you enough time from the 28th to March 1st, or will we need to have a special meeting in order to go over this, get it approved?
If there are subjectivities on these proposals that need us to do something with a little more lead time, I'm going to let you guys know, and we'll deal with that accordingly. I guess I do still have two carriers, one that Bobby and I spent about three hours with at the jail a few weeks ago, who have not said no. That dealer carrier has a meeting in Cincinnati today with their leadership team to discuss a final decision. So, I mean, I guess everything I'm saying, like, if a rabbit gets pulled out of a hat, maybe it's, that's not where we're going to be, but statistically, with what we have back so far, it's not good.
But we will have coverage, no matter what, we will have coverage.
We'll have coverage, yeah.
March 1st.
You notice, he didn't say no matter what, he said, "I think."
Well, we will. I mean, we've got the all-lines aggregate.
We will have coverage.
We're going to have coverage, it's just whether you consider you funding the first 450,000 of claims having.
Having coverage.
Um, just as an aside, I mean, I am pretty involved in our industry organizations and know a lot of people at the state level, and I've had calls with the House Majority Leader and the head of the Department of Insurance about the struggles that some schools and public sector accounts are having as taxpaying entities and what that means to taxpayers. So, I mean, we are working actively. I just told Corey before the meeting that in the 80s, when this happened a little bit like this, they established IPEF, which writes now 90% of the work comp because public sector entities couldn't get work comp, and then they established what's called the Indiana Insurance Political Subdivision Trust, that name's not right, something like that. And essentially, if a public entity couldn't get coverage, the state would have an actuarial firm underwrite that exposure, they would charge a premium, and the state would back those. And as fate would have it, in 2009, the last member left that. So in 2023, seeing it had been dormant for 15 years and they were having an annual contract with an actuary with what looked like probably, in the insurance market, a pretty useless thing going forward, you know, 20 years of dormancy. They dissolved it in 2023. So, I mean, we likely, as it was written before, because we're going to have coverage, wouldn't have qualified. So the discussion right now, I think at the state level, and I think you'll see a bill introduced, is if they reestablish it, is there a qualification that is, the terms are so terrible that it's not fair to the taxpayers, and we need to have some sort of public solution. So, you know, we'll track where that goes. I mean, the unfortunate part about that is they're thinking probably it's a six-to-eight month process to probably get that kind of ironed out. So, probably doesn't help us in two weeks, but I'll keep you posted on that as I learn more, if it becomes applicable and something we need to take a look at.
Any other questions? Thank you, Josh.
One bit of good news, I did get this morning the monthly health insurance report, and we're still 18% below expected budget on that, so that's going well.
Good.
And that renews in July as well, right?
Uh, June 1st.
June.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll ask the Henry County Health Department Administrator Angela Cox.
Before I introduce your new live coalition coordinator, on behalf of the departments that don't fall under the general fund, Josh has already left. What I don't know that the public understands is that my department gets a bill at the discretion of whoever previous administration decided how to slice this apple up, as far as what our responsibility is for general liability versus medical malpractice and all these other, you know, workman's comp. And so I am here to ask you that those of us who do not fall under the general fund, please be able to get to sit at the table with not only the council, but a commissioner representative, to discuss how in the past, this, just telling us that, well, it's just the way it's always been done, Angela, your group life insurance, you know, your group health insurance is this way because it's just the way it's always been done. It's not good enough. And so I would very much like to have that sit down, because it seems like we're at a precipice here that we're going to have to make some serious changes. Now would be a great time to take a look at that, to make sure that that is fair, because the departments that don't fall under the general fund don't have the millions of dollars that the general fund has, you know, to support those. And if it increased, you know, it would trickle down, and previous administrations, it would trickle down to us, without a doubt.
I agree that we need to review that, because it's been a little confusing.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how it was always done that way and how it was divvied up. So I agree that probably, I would suggest that those conversations probably start sooner rather than later, since all of the health insurance and all of that renews in June.
Correct.
So, yeah, I agree, because it's a little bit confusing as to.
And it sure would be nice to know that from a financial standpoint, prior to June 30th, when the budget proposals are due May 1st, and then we don't get a decision about budgets until November.
Right.
You know, I can't know this in November, that, oh, hey, Angela, by the way, we're giving everybody a 5% raise, and, you know, I had to stop my hiring process, because I've got to figure that out first, to make sure that I can sustain that this year. This will be no different.
So you've had to stop your hiring process?
I've put it on pause at the moment, until I can really sit down and figure out, you know, the money with the 5% raise.
So this has a drastic negative effect to your department, then?
Well, the raise, the last-minute piece, I mean, I don't know how big of a negative effect yet, but I'm working on that. But I just do know that when we're talking about, you know, the other pieces of the insurance, so all I ever get is a piece of paper from the auditor's office that, on county letterhead that says, "This department's amount for workman's comp is X amount of dollars, the health department's X amount of dollars," you know. So I just feel like, as a department, I deserve to understand how you came up with that number, you know, because it affects how the rest of the department runs and other things.
Absolutely.
So I'm just asking for some clarity.
I think those conversations need to start, because this is February, I think we should probably start those conversations by March, anyway.
Thank you for that, and I didn't mean to be negative, I'm just, you know, money's money. So, okay. I would like to introduce to you Miranda Wright, who is our newly hired through our Drug Free Community Grant that we rewarded last September. Miranda started with us in December, so she's new to us, but not new to Henry County. And that was one of the great reasons that she interviewed so well, and we look so forward to the things that she's willing to do for us. So Miranda, I'll let you talk about your job.
Okay. So I was, like she said, I was hired in December to work for the Drug Free Communities Grant, and a lot of, since December, what, everything I've been doing is a lot of training, coalition building. My job will be to facilitate and to help implement new programming around substance use and misuse around the county. We have a lot of exciting things going on at the Health Department, in that realm and other realms, too. But for me, right now, is just trying to learn everything about building coalitions and relationships in the county. Like Angela said, I'm not new to the county, I was born and raised here, so for me, it's very exciting, because it's my home county, and I'm kind of, I'm an empty nester now, so it's kind of exciting that I just get to focus on trying to, you know, contribute to the betterment of Henry County. In January, end of January, Shay Becksoni, she's the program director at the Health Department, we went to Washington DC and spent the week and went through a lot of training, a lot of training about coalition building and bringing communities together and how we can do that, and where the grants are, where federal grants are, how we apply for them, so that we can start bringing resources into our community. And then we'll also be going again for various trainings along these same lines. So this first year of my job will be a lot of relationship building and coalition building, because the grant's a five-year grant, but we will have some programs that we will try to implement in this first year, and one of them being what's called the Parent Cafe. It's a training that I went to, and it's about providing training and support for parents in the county. It's an evidence-based practice, and it's really, I kind of equate it just to a support group, because parents are overloaded, and I think that a lot of times, a lot of those services go to the kids, and they go to all these different areas, but parents kind of get left out, and they're overwhelmed. So it's a training that I went to and I got certified in, so that I can go out and hopefully have some of our community mental health providers send their employees to training so that they can start implementing these parent support groups, these parent cafes around the county and in the schools. So you'll hear more of that, I have a flyer, I'll leave with you all today. We'll be emailing some things out. We're going to do a mock demonstration of what that looks like, what a parent cafe looks like. And a lot of the, in the parent cafes, parents also get educated on what's going on in the world, because I think that everything is moving so fast. When it comes to substance use, sometimes they don't know what's, you know, what's going on until maybe it's too late. So a lot of exciting things happening, I'm excited to be here. I don't know if there's anything else, but that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Miranda.
Welcome, Miranda.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good things are happening at the Health Department.
Coroner's Office? Highway Department?
Yep, there.
Yep, there's coroner, coroner's office, we're ready.
Green's good. Just wanted to review the cases that the coroner's office dealt with for two thousand twenty-three. We had a hundred and fifty-one coroner cases. I'll remind you, that's not the total number of deaths in Henry County, just the total number of cases that the coroner's office was involved with, which are suspicious or non-natural circumstances. Of those hundred and fifty-one cases, twenty-three were labeled accidental, two were labeled homicides, six were labeled suicides, one hundred and nineteen were labeled natural, one undetermined. Of the twenty-three accidents, we did have fourteen overdose deaths. I know Angela and I did have spoke to you in the past about that. Still concerning to me, and we are doing some outreach education together with these people, we have had two overdose deaths for the year two thousand twenty-four already as well. So it's an alarming number to me and we're trying to educate and do what we can with that. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Highway department.
I just have a few things here.
Just a few.
Just a few. Looking for, got, no, I gave you guys a kind of a packet here with several different piece of equipment, trucks. Start with the one there on the front. This will be a tandem axle dump truck that we have opportunity to purchase this year. I talked with Selking International and they're willing to hold the price that we've, from the same truck we ordered last year, budgeted for this year. So they will honor that same price if we can get the approvals to move forward with that purchase and get locked in so that we're not subject to another price, price increase.
That price for the truck cab chassis is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents.
That is correct, yeah.
And that's the purchase that won't be, is this the one, it won't be delivered till there's a longer delivery or?
This is scheduled to be built in the fourth quarter of this year.
Okay.
And you have the money in your budget to cover it?
Yes, sir.
That would be the cab chassis from International and then the outfit.
Yeah.
For all the associated equipment would be from Clark Equipment.
From Clark Equipment, yes, for a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-two cents.
One oh three, eight forty and twenty-two cents for the outfit of the new international truck.
Yes. That would be, that is a tandem axle. This truck is specked out identical to the one that's already supposed to be here sometime middle of the year, so.
So do we entertain a motion for this specific truck first, or we'd look at the other two pieces of equipment also?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve so we can get this price locked in since they're holding it.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. That's for the purchase of the truck from Selking International, the outfit from Clark Equipment. Then you have another?
Yeah, then the next piece of equipment is to update our broom. And that would be, we'd be looking at trading in our old broom to be able to purchase this piece of equipment. They're allowing thirty-seven hundred and fifty, or thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars for the trade-in. Since they don't go through, this particular broom does not go through Sourcewell. I got another quote for you, comparison to another company.
So Sourcewell is eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three with a thousand dollar trade-in.
Correct.
Or through, not Sourcewell, excuse me, I'm sorry, Southeastern.
Yeah, that can be bought through Sourcewell.
That can be bought through Sourcewell, yes, okay.
So Source, Sourcewell is what you can go through as a public entity to be guaranteed the lowest price from any number of manufacturers? And what you've done is gone to another one, this Brandeis, and actually found a price less than what the Sourcewell price was through Southeastern?
Correct, and I'm finding that to be the case on a lot of stuff right now that you can actually buy directly from the manufacturer or from a company instead of going through Sourcewell. And a lot of times, the prices have been cheaper here lately than going through Sourcewell.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Brandeis purchase of the brooms. Its total is seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine minus the three thousand, four hundred and fifty-dollar trade-in for the nineteen ninety-seven Rosco broom for a total of seventy-five thou, I think if I've added correctly or subtracted correctly, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
And you do have that in your budget also, correct?
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero for the purchase of the B R O C E, Bosse, broom from Brandeis.
If you could leave yours, because we'll sign it afterwards and give it right back to you, we'll make copies.
Yeah, the, for the broom, as soon as I let him know that this has been approved, he's actually gonna send an official purchase order of himself.
So do you wanna wait for that, Bobby, the ridge, the, for the second one? Okay, we'll wait for that. And then, but the other two, the other two, we need to sign that. So if you would just leave that with Bobby, we'll get it signed and then we'll, if you just hang right after the meeting, we'll get it right back to you.
I can do that, okay. And then the, the next piece is an equipment trailer, update our equipment trailer. This is a little bit heavier duty trailer than what we have. This is a sixteen thousand pound trailer, the one that we currently have is fourteen thousand pound. So it's able to haul our equipment just a little bit better. The total on that is eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
So I'm gonna beat Steve to the punch, I'm gonna ask the question, you have it in your budget? Just a different person saying it, in the budget.
I always wanna know if we can pay for something before we get it.
Well, no, yeah, absolutely.
Because if we don't have the money, then I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we don't have the money, I won't ask for it.
Yeah, you won't ask for it if you don't have it.
I'd appreciate that. Makes my job easier.
I will make the motion to approve the purchase of the trailer.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. In order to approve this, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes three zero for the purchase of the trailer, eleven thousand, three hundred and, eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents from Big Tex Trailer World.
And then last but not least, the assistant superintendent position is on the patenary tonight for the council meetings. And been in contact with them, I think it's very good, very likely it's gonna be approved tonight. So I was wondering if you guys would be willing to approve that, subject to the council's approval. So as soon as the council approves that and we can move forward with the hiring process.
I will make that motion.
We're okay with that, right, Cole? I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Rest, the surveyor.
Okay, so we are presenting a GIS data sharing agreement between Henry County and the R E M C. And so that's for us to get a copy of the above ground and below ground utility data for R E M C on Beacon. But it's kind of a hidden area on Beacon, you have to have a specific login. So it's for the E M A, for nine-one-one, for the, our office to use and the sheriff's office if they need it to get, for emergencies, if we have utilities going in to see the R E M C data. And in return, we're gonna give them a copy of our most recent data, so they have it on their side for mapping also.
Joy, have you reviewed this agreement?
Yeah, I helped draft it and I'm fine with it, I can actually send it clean, Bobby.
Okay, right, you want to go, okay.
The actual sign.
Okay. I will make the motion to approve the agreement.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Thank you. Planning commission?
Tom's not here.
Tom's not here. The sheriff's department, Sheriff's Broles.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Quick question here for my clarification, what, what, what was the motion that was filed with the insurance company?
There was no motion.
I'm just, whatever, I didn't know whether the motion, what was the situation?
I think it's about the information provided to the Indian Department of Insurance regarding travelers' potential cancellation midterm.
Right, and can, can you clarify just for me, just?
Oh, sure, that was just, in suggestion to Josh, because a midterm cancellation is so odd, he thought that asking the Department of Insurance to review it wouldn't hurt anything. So essentially, that's what we've done, is made that request and the Department of Insurance reviewed the midterm cancellation.
Gotcha. Is that because that an insurance company has to be able to show that there is real, that there is real significant change in order, or real significant change in their exposure in order to be able to cancel midterm?
Correct.
Okay. So, so there is, there is, at least we feel some reason that that we would at least request that, that maybe the exposure may not be significant.
Sure, yeah, just ask the Department of Insurance to review that.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay, all right. Several things here, I have got a, and I emailed, I believe you all would have this, I've got a national business furniture quote for a conference table and some chairs. We have a conference room in our new facility that doesn't have a conference table or conference chairs. And there's just several items, some desk for jail staff and some arms, I'm sorry, some arms, some armed chairs for them to be able to better, in the, in the jail pod area, it's like a, they have a three sixty view. We don't have any desk there for them to monitor and they're supposed to be there, somebody there all the time. So a couple crescent-shaped desks and some chairs there. So that's a total of twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eighteen for this furniture and just requesting to get approval for that purchase.
So do we need twenty-four, the expensive twenty-four-seven chairs? Or do they sit in them twenty-four-seven? I, I'm just asking, do we need the expensive twenty-four-seven chairs?
I'm, I'm not.
The eighteen twenty-four-seven chairs, like what they did for dispatch, because they're more expensive, they're heavier duty, because the dispatch did the twenty-four-seven chairs because they're sit, that somebody is seating in them for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
They're supposed to be there twenty-four-seven, monitoring that area.
So we don't have, so the jail staff just sits in the chairs twenty-four-seven? I'm just asking a question, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, right, they're supposed to monitor that twenty-four-seven. So I, I, I was not even aware of the, I'll tell you why that I had them choose this chair. Because it was much less expensive than, you know, the chairs we have in the, in the training room?
Aye.
Those, they're just, they're, they're like a mesh chair. I was shocked to find out that we paid almost five hundred dollars a chair for those, we bought about eighty of them. And so the reason I opted to go with a different chair was to save money, these are three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seemingly a much nicer chair.
Where, where would this money come from, Sheriff?
I would assume that it would come from the, the bond which purchased the first round of furniture.
So we've not had these chairs up until this point, or?
So we haven't had, we haven't had chairs for the conference room because we don't have a conference table. And that would be ten chairs and we'd need another eight.
So do you, you need ten of the twenty-four-seven chairs in the conference room? Again, I'm sorry, you said they were less expensive.
That's fine, I could buy, I can buy the more expensive ones if you want me to.
I was, because I hadn't had a chance, this, all this didn't come till after three o'clock yesterday, I didn't get a chance to really go through it yet. I just kinda perused it. And I guess my first thought was, we just bought all new furniture for a jail less than two years old, so I'm a little concerned that we're buying more furniture again.
Right, well, we didn't buy a conference table for the conference room, so I have not.
And I understand that, and that's why, I guess I was getting ready to ask you, do you know why it wasn't done? Okay. And I do appreciate that these other chairs would be cheaper. I was just trying to figure out, have we done without them all this time as far as the ones that you were replacing that would be less than two years old?
Yeah, they're, they're, they are in disrepair, some of them just two years old, so. And, and I think they were more expensive than this, so I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how that, the quality was chosen there, but we, we bought about eighty chairs for about five hundred dollars that are just not real durable.
And those are coming from the same, same company, or?
Yes, correct.
Are they giving you a better warranty on the chairs that you're purchasing now?
These, these particular chairs, there is a warranty, a replacement warranty, and I, I don't have that in front of me to tell you exactly what it is. But there are a couple of chairs that I'm gonna discuss with them being replaced by warranty.
So the chairs that were purchased that are in disrepair right now, there is a warranty on them?
There, I, I'm not sure, I believe that there are, but I can't give you a specific on that.
Do you know when you would have that information or that they would give it to you, or?
I could get that to you.
I was like, does it, would they, I guess, would they apply that toward the purchase of new chairs if you decided not to have them warranty those chairs?
We could try to work something out like that.
So what's the, what are the commissioners' desire here?
So you're requesting this to come out of the bond? We're getting ready to start discussions of building the pod and I hesitate to just keep taking money out of the bond when we're gonna need that to build the pod. And you don't have it anywhere else in your budget to take it out of?
But it's pretty, pretty lean. I thought that was what that bond was for, is to, to outfit the, the new building.
I, I'm not, it, it is, yes, but I'm also saying that we're going to be building a new J, a new pod here soon, we're starting that discussion. I'm just making a statement that we're gonna need that as well.
So, I mean, do we just leave the conference room undone and unusable?
What do you use, what would this conference room be used for, that the training room would not be used? How big is the conference room?
It's, it is, it is suited for a ten-foot conference table, which would seat ten.
And what would it be used for that you wouldn't use your training room for?
For conferences and meetings, that would be ten or less people because the training room is a lot of times tied up with a lot of people and it's difficult when you've got a meeting of six or seven people and, and the training room is tied up and then we don't have a, we don't really have an option there.
I guess I don't have an issue with you having the conference table and the chairs, and if you're getting the chairs cheaper, then we'll. I guess I don't have an issue with you having the conference table and the chairs. And if you're getting the chairs cheaper than what we originally paid for the chairs and that we can get warranty issues taken care of with those chairs and that the other chairs that you're asking for that are wore out are actually cheaper than the chairs you originally purchased. I do have some of the same concerns Commissioner Plummer does is I know that you're in desperate need of an addition to that with the population, which doesn't seem to decrease as much as we'd like, that we're going to have to add on to that. And to go back to the taxpayers, to ask them to help fund that is a very sticky situation.
I mean, I don't want this $12,000 purchase to upend a $15 million addition.
Well, I hope it doesn't, but you know, it's like everything else. When somebody comes to you and when you're ordering a new car and all the additions keep adding up, the base price seemed pretty good when you started out. But then when you get $50,000 worth of increases as we nickel and dime it, that I guess is the big concern. But yeah, I mean, if it's something that you desperately need, then I'm not opposed to it.
Is that a motion?
Well, I was getting ready to ask if there was any more discussion. If there isn't, then I would make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
A motion is seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero for the $12,878 and 18 cents for the national business furniture.
And are you going to follow up with them about the warranty and see what adjustments can be done?
So this, this dollar figure could come down?
I'm sorry.
This dollar figure could come down? This dollar?
Sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting hold of it in here. This, this figure could come down.
This dollar figure could come down?
Yes.
Okay.
So the next item that I have is the use of equipment fund within here, kind of Sheriff's Office. I believe you all have that letter as well. This is the same letter that has been used for years, just approving the Sheriff's Office to use the, the commissary fund for miscellaneous items that relate to law enforcement and detention.
I think that just is a council thing, isn't it, Joel? I, I don't.
I think it's the county fiscal body.
Yeah.
No, you're, you're correct. You're correct. And I'm sorry, so.
Yeah.
Strike that from the record.
I thought so. I didn't think that we would do that.
Another item is a request to trade vehicles. You've got a letter there in front of you with a lot, actually 10 vehicles that, many of which do not even run. We had negotiated with Fletcher Dodge who we buy our, most of our new vehicles off of for, they said they would give the, give us $14,250 for these vehicles in trade-in price and they will take care of hauling them out of here.
Do you have quotes for purchasing of new vehicles that these trade-ins will go against? So we see the individual, like, oh yeah, Braden's still here. The quote that he gave listed the vehicle with the trade-in.
Correct. So what, what we said, we ordered a, we was able to order one patrol vehicle this year with the money budgeted to us. So we've got that on order and it would go against that. It would go against that.
So it's already been ordered?
Mm-hmm. It won't come in for several months.
So are they purchasing them? Because I guess I don't understand, because typically when I trade in a vehicle, I take my vehicle, we do the deal, they give me the trade-in, I walk away with my vehicle, they keep my vehicle. So you've already ordered it. I'm not sure how the trade-in works now since you've already ordered it.
Well, we can't walk away with a new vehicle because it's not here yet. So when it gets here in two or three months, they would just take this off of the price.
Can you get an updated purchase agreement that shows these vehicles listed as trade-in on that vehicle?
We can, mm-hmm. So I mean, there's no transaction that's been, we just simply made a phone call of ordering the vehicle. So there's, there's no, it's a, it's a state price. There's no transaction. There's no signatures have been done. That happens when the vehicle comes in.
Okay. I would, I would, I guess I will make a motion to wait till the vehicles come in so we can see it on the purchase agreement. How if each vehicle is lined up with trade-in, what each one has done, just like we did with Braden.
That's fine. I mean, they're, you know, they're setting on our lots.
Yeah, they're sitting on our lot over here.
Well, not all of them.
Well, there's several that's sitting on our lot. Yeah. Yes.
She's been trying to get what now?
She's been trying to get all your vehicles from your office. She's been asking for a help and she's not responding.
I, I, I'm not sure about the no response. I heard that line with some of these, when I talked about the, the auction list. The last, some of these have been on an auction list for two years and I believe you said that you were waiting on a response from the chief deputy, which is not accurate. But I'll look into that.
So I will make the motion to table this until we get a purchase agreement with every item listed out as what the dollar figure is for a vehicle that'll go against the vehicle that you have ordered.
I would second that, just for clarification on paperwork where we're at.
Just know that when that vehicle comes in, you know, they're, they, they may not give us the same. They're just setting and deteriorating for more months. So they may, obviously may not be apt to, at that time, give us the same amount.
I, I hope you understand that we have a process that we have to follow. And if State Board of Accounts audits this and just says, where did it go? What, where's the purchase agreement? Was, you know, we just, there's procedures that we have to follow.
I, I am aware of that. I'm also aware that we've traded vehicles in the past, many times that I would be very surprised if you all could produce documentation to know where they went.
And that's part of the problem. That's what we're trying to clean up. Because all vehicles throughout the county are supposed to come through the Board of Commissioners, period. And that's something that we've been trying to clean up and that's why we needed all this documentation. Because I don't particularly enjoy getting my hand smacked for something somebody else does. And so I would like for that to stop. So.
And that's, and that's why that we produced this document.
And I, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing that, but you say they're going to sit and deteriorate, but they're going to sit over there until your vehicle comes in before they're traded because they're not coming to haul them off yet, are they?
They, they said they would come and get them immediately.
Well, if you can, if you can get them to put an agreement together with the dollar figure and we can approve it and sign it, they can come and get it. But until there's any type of an agreement, we can't just release the vehicles.
Oh, I'll get that. So the next item is.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and a motion's been made and seconded. Is that correct?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So then.
More than motions?
To wait until we get some sort of an agreement with the vehicles listed against the purchased vehicle.
Okay. The next item would be, and last item would be my contract. I, I highlighted, I sent it over with everything that had been changed from the 2023 contract, signed contract. And I just simply highlighted for ease of review, any item that's been changed.
I guess Mike doesn't have to highlight it.
I do have a question. Was this, or should this have been, because I had a conversation with one of the council members. Because they, there was some confusion.
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed the first part of what you said.
I said, I had a conversation with one of the council members and I said, I guess I'm, I need some clarification. Went, should this not have been done when your budget was turned in? For your contract to be renewed and updated in accordance with everybody else's? Because there was some discussion between the council and us on, since the budget has already been approved, this is going to alter the budget. So I guess I need clarification here.
Yeah, well, clarification is in state statute. The state statute requires the county to pay a certain amount. And I don't think that, that, I don't think that changes on what time you get a contract done. So the county is required to pay 70% of the prosecutor's salary due to our population size. And I want to clarify this. The state sets a range that is a minimum. The county must pay. It's just, it's, it's not an option. They, it says the county must pay at a minimum of 70%. So, you know, could this have been done sooner? It could have been. However, you know, 2023 was not done. My contract for 2023 was not done during budget session either.
I think what Commissioner Delinger is referring to is I believe that it wasn't appropriated. It was, the increase that was determined in July was not included in your budget.
It was, it was discussed. It was, it was discussed with council members and so they, they were aware.
Right, but the budget is turned in by your office. They don't change it.
Salary ordinance.
Yeah, salary ordinances, yeah.
I guess that was my confusion, was find out that this is going, there's something else that's going to alter what was approved. So I want to make sure if we're, I understand the legal obligation we have to pay, what amount we have to pay. I get that. I understand.
And just, just while we're on that topic, it hasn't been, the county has not paid the legal amount for the last seven months.
And I'm assuming it's because nobody was aware that it was supposed to go up.
Salary ordinance to pay on a.
Yeah. There has to be a salary ordinance. You guys create the salary ordinance, you take it to the council, the council approves it. They didn't get a salary ordinance, therefore it could not take place. It's why.
Okay, so you're, so they're not obligated to pay if they sell?
That's between the council and Joel. We're just talking about your contract.
There's a minimum that a sheriff is allowed to be paid if they don't have a contract. So most people, if they had a contract, are going to ask for at least that minimum. Why else would you ask for that? But in theory, a sheriff could say, oh, well, you pay $5,000 a year and sign a contract and that would be perfectly legal. Now, I don't think anybody in the state has probably ever done that. Maybe they're independently wealthy and pick the power ball the same year.
Right.
Decide to do it for your favor. Maybe that would happen, but that's what it is essentially in the contract terms. And by law, if you don't have a contract, you can retain certain fees as a sheriff or tax collections, provided the total compensation does not exceed what the full-time prosecutor.
Right, right. So there's just, those, those were the questions that were, that the salary ordinance wasn't done. Nobody's saying that it's not going to happen and, I mean, we're legally bound to do so. I had asked Joel what the procedure was since they were going to have to, the council was going to have to potentially do an additional appropriation if it was, they had to do it first or we had to do it first, just as procedure. And he did say that we could make the motion contingent upon the council's approval. So, you know, I will make the motion to approve the sheriff's contract.
Contingent.
Yes, thank you. That word went away for me. Contingent upon, my dementia's sitting in. Contingent upon council approving the additional appropriation and salary ordinance. So will they, I guess, I do have a question. Will they have a salary ordinance today? Do they have a salary ordinance for their meeting today?
To my knowledge, sometimes the salary ordinance are created by you all. Okay. So, so let me just, while we're, let me, I want to say a couple of things. It's been interesting. And it's always interesting to me. I get up here and I've been here forever and these poor people having to sit here and watch this just get, you know, nitpicked to death. And, and the, you know, the salary ordinance, I, I know because I've got some emails that said, you know, just we'll, we'll take care of doing the salary ordinances. What do we do, let me ask you this question. What do we do when you approve a yearly salary ordinance? It changes in July, the, the sheriff's salary. So we, we do a yearly salary ordinance in, for the first half of the year and then do another yearly salary ordinance? Okay. So.
I only, I only, I only handle writing our salary ordinances when something changes. So I don't know what that, how that process works.
Yeah, well, we can, we can get a salary ordinance over.
But I guess that if it changes in July, it's from July to July. So you really only have to do a salary ordinance from July to July. If it changes every, you have to have one for the, for the new year? Okay. See, and that's why I say I'd let them do it because that's not my, that's not my lane.
Can, can you all email a, a blank salary or however, how do we get a, how do we get the form? Okay, so just, okay, we'll get one over. Good day.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I will second it. And it's been seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the sheriff's contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I don't have anything else. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So I'm going to make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting. Do we have to do this public hearing? Is that a public hearing or just part of our meeting?
It's a party ready to be. I mean, I think if everyone's here and they're willing to wait, you can continue the rest of the business or if you want to recess, I'd have the.
I have the, the appeal. So I'm not sure. I know Landon's here. Is everybody here that's supposed to be here? Or I want to make sure that the person appealing has the opportunity because it's. Oh, she's in the hallway? Okay, okay.
So we shall.
You can, if you'd like, to recess.
We'll recess the commissioners' meeting.
So I'll make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting until 12:30.
Motion's been made. Second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's, so we're recessing.
Probably.
Yes. We're going to take a five, five-minute break here before we start with the next order of business.
Yeah.
If I could have everyone's attention. We have another order of business to deal with. So I'd like to call the commissioners back to order for this order of business in regards to a vicious animal. And the first order of business is to call the Middletown Police Chief, Landon Dean, to kind of spell out what's happening.
Okay, so we have the officer involved and also the victim in the case. But in a nutshell, we received a call for a dog that had, a neighbor's dog that had gotten a hold of the neighbor's dog and, and decapitated a little Pomeranian dog.
What was the date of this incident?
What's that?
The date?
January what?
Seven.
January seventh.
January seventh.
So we responded, we called animal control. Animal control issued some tickets. And the, the person that owned the dog said that they would keep the dogs inside. There were continual problems, the dogs got out again. We called animal control, and this time the dogs had charged the police officers that went. The, the dogs were taken by animal control that, at that point, I believe. In, in between time, they had moved the dogs to Muncie. Muncie Animal Control made them send them back to, to Middletown because it was Middletown's problem. And then after conferring with the animal control director, Officer Osborne issued a vicious animal complaint to the dog owner and, which had several requirements. And I believe you guys have the report that have the vicious, the requirements for the vicious animal designation, and also the original report and pictures of the Pomeranian that was decapitated in the office, so, or in the, in the yard. And there is a fence between the two yards, but there's a hole in the fence that the vicious dog got a hold of the Pomeranian through, and that's how that happened. So everybody's concerned. The, the dogs have, after they returned back home, got out again, and animal control was taken or called, and they, they took the dogs. And the, the, or the dog owner has now paid the fees at the animal control and has taken those dogs back from the animal control. I don't know if they're at their house or whatever. But part of the vicious animal ordinance is that they have to keep them in the house. If they're outside, they have to be muzzled, they have to be neutered, they have to be, have their shots. And all that has to be proven. And as, given the number of calls where there, we've been there, we're concerned that the rules are, still aren't going to be followed because they haven't been followed yet. And also, you know, there's already been a dog lost its life. You know, what if one of these dogs get a hold of a child in the neighborhood or another police officer? And we just really question the ability to keep these dogs in twenty-four hours a day. And that's why that order was issued. And, and then we found out that she had asked for a hearing, and that's why we're here. I would be happy to yield to the homeowner or the, the victim in this case, and also the officer that responded to that case to give, to enlighten you more than what I have.
Thank you. If you would please step up to the microphone and state your name, please.
My name is Mitchell Todd. I'm a resident of Middletown for twenty years now. I'm originally from Pendleton. These are, I have a German Shepherd, and my wife has two small Pomeranians. Both the Pomeranians are, are rescue dogs from Grateful Rescue out of Yorktown in Muncie. There has been a significant, their, their rescues from, from an Amish puppy mill. The dog that, that was decapitated was mistreated and had his vocal cords cut, so he has neurological issues. I don't, I don't, I, they pulled my dog through my fence, they damaged my fence. If you go up and down the inside of the fence, the fence is continually damaged. I'm afraid that they're going to dig underneath my fence and end up in my yard. The neighbors have, I mean, we have a dozen, ten and under children that ride their bikes. I showed up for Christmas, after Christmas, and the dogs are loose again in my yard, barking at me. I, I probably should have put them down myself as self-defense at that time, but I tried to continue to be a good neighbor. At the first night, she claimed that she wanted to give them up. But because it was a, a release, the animal control wouldn't take them. It was a voluntary release, and they weren't outside of her house. So they wouldn't take them. But that night she was willing, so we continued to try, try to be good neighbors. We, she moved in the beginning of the year. My son cut her grass for her until the dogs broke the window out and attacked my son. I, I've taken the trash out, and we didn't call the police any of those times because we have been cordial up until her dogs decapitated my dog. I've not filed a civil suit. After today's hearing and the emotional damage that we continue to go through, we just found out last night that she's brought the dogs back. I'm afraid to let my kids go walk down the street or go to their friend's house because I don't know if these dogs are going to attack them when she's not, she is unable to control them. And I, I, I don't know what, I apologize. I don't know what else you want to hear from me.
That is perfectly fine. No need to apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Officer Jennifer Osborne. I'm with the Middletown Police Department. On January seventh, I was on patrol and received a dispatch to the victim's address on a complaint that a neighbor's dog had killed their dog. When I arrived, obviously, the neighbor was very upset, and he showed me where the dog had been pulled through the fence. I apologize, it's very graphic. But one part of the dog's body was on their property of the fence, and the body was stuck in a hole in the fence. The head of the dog was on the property owner's side of the fence, approximately two feet from the body of the dog. I did go to Ms. Cox's door, knocked on her door. She was very upset. She asked me to wait for her adult children, to talk to them. When they arrived, her son went in to talk to her and came back outside, told us that she could not control the dogs. She was willing to surrender them that night. Animal control had already been called because the dogs had been charging at myself and two other officers who had responded through the windows when we were walking around the property. Animal control then decided, since it was owner surrender, they would not take the dogs at that time. So the next morning, I came in, we, I issued the vicious dog order to her personally and explained to her that she was able to keep the dogs if she followed all of the requirements on the order. She has done none of the requirements. There is no signs posted. The fence, from what I can see, has not been repaired. She moved the dogs to her late mother's house in Muncie, where there's no fence. I was in constant contact with one of the animal control officers in Muncie. They do not want the dogs there. They considered it owner transfer since she did not, she did not live at the house. She's not the estate, she's not in charge of the estate. Her brother called and spoke with me at length about how he does not want the dogs in the house in Muncie because there's no fence, there's nobody living there, the mother's deceased. So the dogs were left unsupervised twenty-four hours a day. I had a subsequent conversation with Ms. Cox, telling me that she was going to bring the dogs back and she could contain them in her house twenty-four hours a day because they were pad-trained. A few days after they arrived back, one of my fellow officers was dispatched to the residence again because Ms. Cox was at work. The dogs had, again, broken out of a window and were loose in the neighborhood. That is when animal control was called and the dogs were confiscated.
You know what date that was?
I do not, I was not on duty on that day.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead.
I, I don't really have anything further to, to add to that unless you have questions for me.
So the, the dogs, have they broken out the windows?
Yes. I was told by her son on the, the initial contact that the dogs had broken out of two different windows on the house. One on the side where there is a fence that's dilapidated. Dogs can easily get out of the fence. And on the side where there is no fence. So they've broken out of the house through windows at least three times, I'm aware of.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions for you?
No more questions. Thank you, thank you for your time. If we could have, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Lisa Cox.
I'm sorry?
Lisa Cox.
Lisa Cox.
Lisa Cox. Thank you, Lisa. Would you please go on with your, with your side?
My dogs have never broken out a window. They've taken out a screen, so now all of my windows are shut and locked because they can tear out a screen, and they did that twice. Once the window was open, the other time the window was closed, and they open the window with their nose and go out through the screen. So now all of my windows are locked. When I brought them back to the house, I guess the bathroom window wasn't unlocked. The dogs cannot get out of the fence and have never gotten out of the fence. Another dog put its head through a hole in the fence, and my dogs did what dogs do. They're seven and two, they have never bit anyone, they have never attacked anyone, they've never chased anyone. They do protect their property, they will bark like crazy if you come on the property. But they have gotten out before, animal control was never called or had to be because they come home. And that was before I locked up all my windows, which the house has no central air, so it was a very long summer. I did do five hundred dollars worth of repairs of the fence. But the fence is busted in from my neighbor's side where their dogs repeatedly tried to get into my fence. So I have boards that are coming in, where the dogs are coming in from the other side. The guy that repaired the fence said that he guessed whoever lived there before me probably had dogs as well because it looks like this has been going on for years. Because the fence is all beat down, and it's all coming towards me. It's not coming towards their yard, the dogs are trying to get into my yard. And when a dog did get into my yard, my dog attacked it. I'm not proud of that, but that's what happens. They're not vicious, but if an animal pops into a dog's yard, that's what a dog does. They've never bit anyone. I did, they were never at my mom's alone either. I went and stayed at my mother's house with my dogs. I was kind of, there had been some comments about, you know, shooting my dogs, and I'm really afraid to be there. I'm still afraid to be there. But I can't afford to buy another house until my mom's estate settles. But I am afraid to be there. I don't want shot, I don't want my dogs shot, they're not bad dogs. They protected their area, they aren't mean, they're not vicious, they don't chase people. They, none of that is true. I had COVID when this happened, and it was three weeks after my mother passed away.
Were you there when the, when the...
Yes.
When it was reported that the dog or dogs actually lunged at one or two of the police officers? Did you see that?
I wasn't there.
So if they said it happened and you weren't there, then do you believe that it could have happened? If the dogs were challenged, that they could have in fact attacked a police officer?
I believe they would have lunged at an officer on my yard.
Okay, so you don't, you don't know that that did not happen?
Right. I know it didn't happen off my yard.
And if they, if they have, if they've testified that the dogs have exited the house through a window, whether or not it was a screen or a glass, if the dogs exited the house when they're supposed to be maintained in the house, you would agree that that is a problem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You can go on, continue.
So I, you know, they, there is a window that's open that I, I kept open until this, on the side where the fence is. Because that's where the dogs, they go in and out that window and go in that area. The fenced-in area is not by the door. I don't want to risk the dogs getting loose trying to get to the fenced area. So they do go in and out that window. But I've been there for...
I have a question, so just a statement that you just made. So when you're not there, you would leave that window open so the dogs could go in and out of the house freely?
Yes, the dogs have never gotten out of the gate, ever.
Okay, thank you.
When they did get out, they got out through a window, and those windows are all closed and locked now. And they, they've never bit anyone. I, I do believe that they would lunge at someone if they came on my property.
What kind of dogs are these?
They're mutts.
Size-wise?
Hmm.
Poundage?
One's, one's probably seventy, and the other one's probably fifty. The fifty-pounder, she's seven, eight years old. Like, I have pictures of her getting her picture taken with Santa Claus at PetSmart. Never been a problem. I used to take her in PetSmart a lot. The younger one, the two-year-old, kind of wild, doesn't bite, but it's kind of wild. And I would not take her in PetSmart, just because... Well, I have eleven grandkids, and the problems I have with my grandkids is the dogs lick their faces. I don't have a problem with them being mean to my grandkids, but I can't get them to quit licking the faces.
Have you been given information as to what you have to do in order to maintain those dogs? As far as the signage that's supposed to be available for someone to see? A three-foot-by-three-foot sign that says vicious dog?
Yeah.
You've been given all the, all that information about sealing your house up so that they cannot get out the window, and if they are outside, they have to be in a fenced-in area? You, or muzzled?
They've been in the pound since then, yes.
So where are they now?
The pound.
They're at the pound right now?
Yes, until this is over.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I was...
They said that, but that's not true.
You, you did not go bond them out? I thought you had said to me that you paid...
I paid the nine hundred dollars.
To get them out, but they're back...
But I wasn't allowed to take them. They said I had to pay the nine hundred dollars.
Okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was to get them out, I apologize.
But they said I couldn't take them until this hearing.
Okay. So you haven't followed anything on the vicious animal, what you were supposed to do? The dogs need to be, oh, they're there, but you still have not put a sign up? You've still not done the things that, in order for you to be able to get them back?
I have the signs. I, I don't, I haven't put them up yet because the dogs aren't there. But what I'm, what I did instead was, what do you call it? Contest the vicious order because they're not vicious dogs.
If the officers have... If they have been exposed to the animals that fall under the category of the definition of a vicious animal, and they've been exposed to that because they've seen it with their own eyes, then they issued the citation, as I understand it, because what they saw met what was in the law as far as having a vicious animal.
The definition of a, of a vicious animal is a dog that attacks off of its property. They do not meet that criteria. The legal definition, actually, twice. They have to attack off of their property, another, a domestic pet twice, or a human once. But my dogs have never ran off their property to attack someone. That's, they won't, they would not, I can guarantee that. And that's the definition of a legal dog by law, a vicious dog.
Yeah. I got to get to the page here.
They don't do that. I mean, they protect their property, but they're not.
Well, the comment that you made, I guess, the, the comment that concerns me some is you say that they didn't attack the neighbor's dog until the neighbor's dog came onto your property. From the testimony I got from the officer, the dog, and I apologize for this. The dog never left his property. Your dogs decapitated the dog because its head was just through the fence somehow or another, got a hold of it and, and decapitated the dog.
My dog's head won't fit through that fence. That dog tried to crawl through that fence and it was barking. I could hear it. I don't know about this local court thing. They were barking at each other because they do that every day. And when it popped into my fence growling and barking, my dog bit it and it's a small dog.
Do you have anything else to add? Landon, I saw you have your hand up.
I just wanted, first of all, point out something, important part that I did leave out. The first night of the first instance, she was wanting to have the dogs put down, but didn't have the money to do that. I did some research and got the local vet and found a funding source to have both dogs put down at a, at a negotiated price with the veterinarian. I sent an officer down that evening to make sure that's what she wanted to do. She said yes. So I made the appointment. The next morning, when we attempted to get the dogs to do that, is when she had changed her mind. And the other thing, uh, these dogs, no matter, respectfully, no matter what she says, they are very vicious. I've been dealing with dogs for a long time in my career. They did challenge the officers. The officers would have had every right to, to shoot the dogs at that time. They all, they exercised restraint. They did not and they utilized the animal control. But in every definition of the word vicious, at least one of those dogs is very vicious. And I'm very worried for the neighborhood. She's already proven that she cannot contain those dogs in that house. They've gotten out once since the vicious order was issued. So it's just my very strong opinion that those are vicious dogs and I'm very worried about the neighborhood. I'm worried about her and those, in the house with, with those dogs. So um, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
I will say I, I was given a copy of the police reports for the various incidents, incidents that have occurred, those dates. And they're very graphic. I mean, the, it, it does talk about the, the dogs being very aggressive and lunging toward and, and attempting to get out a window that was closed. I believe it said in there that they were attempting to get out of the window to the officers that night. And thankfully the window was closed. I think that may have been the second visit. I'm not sure which visit it was. So I am also very concerned about this. And, and I will say, um, I'm a commissioner. My background is not in animal control. So I have to rely on those who deal with this on a daily basis. And I would have a difficult time, um, in my mind, overruling, um, when animal control deems somebody an animal as vicious. May I finish, please? Because if, if I were to overrule something like this and a child get attacked, I would never, ever be able to live with myself. And I will say history. My sister was attacked by a neighbor's dog when she was in the fourth grade. Maul'd in her face. Spent six weeks in Riley Hospital. So I know that a, a friendly, seeming friendly dog that you've been around can turn in a moment. And luckily she was able to have plastic surgery, all those things and, and recover. But I witnessed the attack of a dog that we had been around for years. So in my mind, um, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion to not overturn and not appeal the vicious dog determination. Motion to affirm that the vicious dog, um, determination stands.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I would have seconded that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Now that does not mean that she has to get rid of the dogs, but she has to follow each and every one of these items in code.
All you're determining right now is whether the animal is vicious.
Okay. 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 So.
Animal control did not deem the dogs vicious. That's why they did not take them that night. Because when I talked to animal control and asked them about it, they said that it was Middletown Police that deemed the dogs vicious because they couldn't override that. But the only thing I can do is go through Middletown Police to have that reversed because they would not deem the dog vicious on their own property that's happened all the time. That's what they told me.
Under your code, law enforcement officers are permitted to issue vicious order.
That animal control was there and said they were not.
But the law enforcement officers have deemed them vicious. So I should, I should amend my statement because I said animal control deemed them. So I will, um, do I need to pull my motion? Just, just amend that, that. For the record, it was law enforcement and our code does give law enforcement the ability to deem an animal vicious.
Animal control advised me to get an attorney because it was Middletown Police.
Well, and Middletown Police, it, it says here, animals determined to be vicious by the director of the county animal shelter or his or her designee or any law enforcement officer shall be confined by the owner within the building or secure exposure, which shall include four sides atop, no less than it goes through the description. So law enforcement is able to deem an animal vicious.
Okay. Thank you for your time. That now concludes the hearing on the vicious dog. So we will once again adjourn that part of the commissioners meeting and pick back up on our regular commissioners meeting.
I'm just looking for department hands.
I'll say we were, we were auditors.
We were at the auditors.
Yep.
Anything else from the auditor's office? Clerk's office? Memorial Park? Assessor's office? Recorder's office? Waits and measures? 911. Brian, do you have anything for the commissioners? Thank you. Mandy Fleming? From the Hen- Henry County Emergency Medical Services. Mandy Fleming. There she is.
I got a few things. Give me a second to get back in meeting mode. The squad that was wrecked back in October, um, got an estimate back. They only did like bodywork estimate on that and, and we don't want hold fluid in the radiator. So we're not going to fix it. Here we go. I just want permission to decommission it, um, dump it.
Can I ask how much the estimate was to fix, please?
Just under four grand.
Just under four grand for bodywork?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's without a mechanic looking at it. So it's got 217,000 miles on it.
Well, we were looking at possibly we have, we have other agencies who are looking for vehicles and wanted to know whether it was plausible.
If they weren't going to use it to respond, they could potentially have it fixed. But I'm pretty sure either the bent the frame. I know for sure the push bar got jacked up into the radiator. So that you can see. I don't know as far as mechanically, we just didn't have it looked at mechanically.
That is the one that's sitting over here on this lot.
Correct. So if you want that for that, I mean, you can look at it. I wouldn't, I, that's, I explained to the insurance company, I wouldn't trust it to respond to. So.
Okay.
And we're not going to use it, but it can be used for training purposes. So if we can.
We can put it at the EMA?
Yes. So if I could transfer it to EMA.
For extractions and different things.
And then we can use it on the training ground for training. So, so at least it still.
Is that something we can do without ordinance?
Okay. Is it?
Okay.
Okay. All right. I have the contracts here for sending the three EMTs to advanced class. Update, I guess. I did get our certs in the mail today to be ALS at the intermediate level. I have a meeting with the hospital Monday. And once they sign a hospital provider agreement, then we will start responding that way. Well, I will until May. So at the advanced level means we can bill higher. I can give it to ambulance billing. Anytime I respond or give meds, that's an ALS rate. Obviously we pull in more money. So I have, I am sending three, three students right now to the advanced class at Redline. And then when those three complete, as long as that went well and they pass their test, and I think that's a good rotation, then I would like to send three more. And that's for this year. Next year, um, I would actually start adding a medic school in there. So it's, it's how we're going to keep our service going because the staffing is so critical. So I need to educate and update all the people in our services, how we're going to do it. So this was the bottom. I get these three on advanced and they should be done and certified June, July. So by June, July, we'll have a 24/7 trip, just with the ones we're educating. Lucas finished his medic school in May, so he can respond as well. So.
So the, the ones that you're paying the tuition for, you are requiring them to stay for so long?
Yep. So the contract is that we'll pay for their education. Once they complete the class, pass the class and then pass the national registry, which that's the key part. Then as long as they complete all of that and then stay with us for at least one year, they don't have to pay us back. If they fail in any of those, then they have to pay us back.
And you set it up on payment schedules and you have them different options and they can, they can pay back? I know, Joel, you've reviewed.
Seven of the one that we use.
We put in the city.
Yep. Yeah. We just, I think, in fact, we just used the same one. I just changed.
Changed the name?
Yep.
Yeah. I will make the motion to approve the three.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
And then the last thing, just letting you know, we, um, I will leave next Tuesday to fly to North Carolina and do the final inspection on the ambulance. And then that ambulance will follow me back in the next few days. So.
And that's the psychiatric ambulance that you got through the grant? Is that right?
Yes. So two and a half years.
It's taken a long time.
To get this here. So. But we're finally there. So you'll be seeing that. That's all I got.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. We ran out of Bill Upchurch, so we don't have him. Building inspector? No. Tim Welsh has already been here and left probation. Susan Lightfoot, Henry County. Can you make corrections?
Wait, hang on. With Susan Lightfoot?
With Susan Lightfoot.
Uh, and I'm going to present this one. So she had sent, and we do this every year. It's a support letter regarding the Henry County Adult Community Based Supervision Grant for fiscal year 2025. So she had reached out and asked that we, um, create this support letter like we did for 2024, 2023, or 20, yeah, 20, 2024 and 2023. So I do have the letter. So I'm just going to make the motion that we, um, um.
Sign the letter?
This letter of support for the Henry County Adult Community Based Supervision Grant.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have seven bonds that we need to approve. I will read the names. Anybody has a problem with one of them, indicate by saying, hey, you got a problem with that. First one's Deborah Barnes, Township of Franklin, trustee. Scott Hayes with the Henry County Redevelopment Commission. Chad Malacote with the Henry County Redevelopment Commission. David Gratner, Henry County Redevelopment Commission. Paul Jansen, Henry County Redevelopment Board. Kelly Watson, Henry County Redevelopment Commission. Jonathan Madison, board member.
I'll make the motion to approve. Bonds is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve those bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. The quotes that we have from Resolve Tech for the Masonic Building?
So, um, there are some exhaust pipes that come out into the parking lot that are very low to the ground and, and they're having some issues with, um, the smell of the fumes that are coming out. And so the proposal is to, um, put those up to 15 feet so they're not down. So I want to say there may be, Stephen, you've looked at them. There may be what? 18 inches, 12 inches, 18 inches above the ground at most? Maybe a little higher, but they're not very, they're not very high. So this will, um, uh, correct the problem of the exhaust fumes coming out. And I think it may be going into, being smelled into one of the buildings by the, in the back of the Masonic building.
So is there a motion for Resolve Tech?
I will make the motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolve Tech to resolve the issue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Second of all, we have an FTR recording software for the courts.
Okay. So Jeff, so there are, each, each courtroom has recording software. I believe it's pretty much required, Joel, isn't it? To have all of these recordings in each courtroom?
I have to make the transcript and do it without recording it. It's like a little bit for.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, I think the last time these were upgraded was 2014, maybe. It's been quite a while. One court, uh, we have already rebuilt, or Jeff has, uh, rebuilt the system this week because it crashed. He was able to get it rebuilt. The quote attached, so, um, we need four of these systems and the quote is attached. It includes the software. And you'll see the total. It's the software. It's, um, I think, I'm not sure everything that goes with it because the courts know. There's speakers, warranty, the switch. There's a hearing impaired system. And so the total, um, for, um, this is $59,871.84. Does not include the new computers. So he has included a quote for four new computers of $3,404 for the total project cost of $63,275.84. Now, the one reason that it was brought to us, A, it's a, a quote. But B, uh, the court's budgets do not have anything in there to purchase this. And, um, we're going to have to find it somewhere in order to do this. I would imagine, uh, we could, and Joel, you can tell me this. We as commissioners can pay for it out of our computer maintenance and budget or, uh, somewhere in there because they, we, Jeff Lutz and I met with all three judges and they do not have any funds budgeted to cover any of this.
So what is your pleasure?
Well, I, I'm pretty sure that we're not going to really have a choice. This is probably more procedurally than anything because we need, we do need to upgrade this. We're going to have to. I'm going to make the motion to approve, uh, the purchasing of the four. We don't have a choice. If something were to go down in the middle of the trial, uh, we're going to have a problem.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I think it just seems like a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
I wish we had another way.
The next item on the agenda is the DIS database sharing agreement, which we've already covered. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
The board's head provisions air permit.
I think this is just informational. I don't think we have to.
Informational? They do have an air permit. DLZ window proposal?
I did not receive, uh, the information that I will say. So part of the, um, uh, project that we're working on with and looking at with the courtroom or courthouse and the other buildings, uh, one thing that DLZ and they're looking at getting numbers in a quote. They want to do a test run on two windows, one in the Masonic building and one in our building because the way, when the build, the windows were replaced at one point, at one point, the windows are actually smaller than the opening, and it was framed around, uh, and they want to do a test, just to make sure that when they take it out, they know what they're getting into, um, but I did not get that information, uh, we thought we'd have it prior to the meeting, but that will be forthcoming, and a decision can be made at a later date.
Thank you. Newcastle Library Summer Reading Program?
Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Winnie Logan, I'm with the Newcastle Henry County Public Library, and we would like to request permission to use the football field that is east of State Route Three, uh, this summer for our summer reading kickoff event, um, that would be on June first from five to nine P.M. Our theme for summer reading this year is adventures in Henry County, and, uh, one of the things we would like, the, I guess the reason that we would like to use that field is because we are looking to book a hot air balloon, uh, from Circle City Balloons out of Indianapolis, and they need a large space to be able to have the hot air balloon so that we can take people up and down in that, um, with no light poles and trees and all of those things. So, um, my librarian, who has been working on planning this event, did meet with Eric Moffett from the Youth Football League, and they determined that the field would meet the requirements of the hot air balloon company, and so, um, we decided that that would be an ideal location for the activity. The Youth Football League, um, they stated that they have no issues with us using that field for the event, um, as long as we keep the vehicles off of the football fields, so we understand that. The hot air balloon company does come with insurance, so we would be covered under their insurance, um, so no issues there. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that's our...
Would we need any type of a rider or anything for the county?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, I think the, I believe that is not...
Then they're good, okay, okay. I think this, this is a wonderful idea. Uh, I may have to show up June first, just to see, uh, so I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the use of the field east of State Route Three for the, for the library summer reading program on June the first from five P.M. to nine P.M. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Maintenance building discussion?
So we have received back the, uh, state design release, uh, for, uh, the new maintenance building, and they have, uh, Taylor Construction has sent over to Kenny Melton the, um, digital copy and the full set of plans, uh, for them to start issuing and looking through to issue the building permit. Uh, Rick West from Taylor, uh, Construction did ask when we thought that they could start, um, the demolition and the build. Uh, now I know with the, uh, we're probably gonna have to remove some vehicles that have been moved into the lot, uh, the sheriff's vehicles are gonna have to be moved out of the way, my, uh, guess is, um, in order for this to take place, so, um, I just need to let them...
At least have a conversation to see how much of that lot they need.
Correct, right.
If we can shove them at one end, and give them enough room, then...
Right. Um, so I don't know if, you know, do we wanna wait until the threat of snow is over, or start as soon as we possibly can? Um, it's kinda open for discussion.
I would reach out to them and see what their timeframe is, how quickly they want to start.
They ask, hey, when can we start, so...
Uh, if they're not too concerned about the weather, we, pretty much, our maintenance guys have got the majority of their stuff out of the building already.
Yeah, I think except the snow removal.
So if we can...
Okay, I'll just tell them ASAP, okay? All right, I will call Rick West back and tell them as soon as they can get it on their schedule.
Sounds like a plan, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The resolution ordinance under the red line there, resolution of the Board of Prairie Town, Township of Henry County concerning insurance.
Yeah, I've seen it, I don't know if it's a certainty you need to take action on, I think what, what the, because you approved the trustee's bond, appoint a deputy with the same powers, incompetent powers, and they have to know that as well.
Okay.
So that's why I just made note for record, you received that resolution, it was passed by the Prairie Township Board.
Okay, uh, we don't have to do that in the form of a motion, it's just that we've received it in the minutes?
No, it's received in the minutes.
Okay. Which one?
The, the women's recovery program.
Oh, yes, the women's recovery, it should have been marked out on your itinerary.
It's been marked out, yes.
It was not, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had marked it out. Yeah, they, they have asked to be moved to, I think, the March meeting.
Anybody, members of the public, anyone else have anything for the commissioners?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.